Public Works meeting of October fourteenth to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lewitin.
I'm here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Um, first, where's our city manager? He's supposed to be in the room when we start these meetings.
Emily's not gonna know where she is.
Present, right?
No. I wanna know where the city manager is first before I vote.
I don't think it's required protocol at committee.
Alderman Coles. Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Cadella.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley. Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Chocky.
Here.
All right, first off, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of September sixteenth, two thousand and ten. Do I have a second? On the question, changes, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next up is a report and recommendation. Mister Bond's gonna liability in operating, maintaining utility water pump.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. A question arose as to whether or not the city could legally install a utility water pump in a private retention pond in order to alleviate some of the flooding that would occur. My office looked into that issue and has, we've rendered an opinion that the city does not have the legal authority to do so. They, generally, the public entity has the authority to engage in public projects that are within the public right-of-way, on public property, village and city property and so forth. They do not have the authority to go onto public, onto private property. If they do go onto private property, then there's a question as to whether or not there is liability to the city for installing a utility water pump on private property. And the answer to that question, the courts and the state statute have indicated that there is, in fact, liability to the city if you were to do so by installing that. There's some practical problems that come to mind by installing the pump on private property 'cause you've gotta make sure that that pump is going to have some type of a power source. And generally, when you need it most is the time that you're going to have the public work staff and the rest of the city staff is going to be taxed anyway. They're going to be looking at other, you know, the other, the public facilities to make sure that the streets aren't flooding, to make sure that the water is being otherwise addressed in that regard. So it's at that, the time that's most critical, they're not going to be able to get to this private property to maintain and check, make sure it's got power, make sure the pump is functioning and so forth. That imposes a duty for the city to maintain that private pump, maintain the electric service to that private pump, and make sure that it is functioning at all times. And as a result of that, the courts have indicated, and there's a, there's a case, T R T A N J, you can get a better pronunciation than me, versus City of Granite City. And in that case, the, the courts found that the Tort Immunity Act, which generally protects the government for actions that it engages in, did not extend to private property and that there was not coverage under the Tort Immunity Act and that by engaging in, in projects on public property, and this one had to do with a sewage backup, sewer backup, the court said that that, the, the city was liable because they did go beyond the scope of their statutory grant of authority, which dealt with the public, and went on to purely private property, which may benefit a number of private property owners, but doesn't necessarily benefit the city as a whole. And the court said as a result of their engaging in activity on private property, that that exposed the city to, to liability. So that's a long lawyer answer to saying that it is not permitted by law and it's not recommended because it will expose the city to liability. So it's our legal recommendation that the city not consider maintaining, installing a utility water pump in a private retention pond.
A quick question, Pat. So do we even need a motion on this since, you know, that's pretty cut and dry right there?
It's very cut and dry. There is not a, a motion made. There is a, you did need to, I know the, the council wanted an opportunity to help alleviate the flooding problem in this area, has looked at a number of different options. One of the options it looked at was to install and maintain this water pump. And the question arose as to whether the city could do that. And again, based on my research and it's my recommendation that you don't. So you don't need to take any, any action, formal action. It's just a, for a point of information for you and, and those affected property owners that unfortunately, the city is not, does not have the legal authority or capacity to do that.
I'll be honest, here it says attorney-client privileged communication. If those residents wanted to see this, can't give it to them?
Yeah, you, you can give them to them. I can't, but the, it's a, it's a privilege that you have that I've now.
The bottom line, I was out there with the city engineer, Mister Zainer. And actually, one of the residents saw me out there, the wife of the residence. And I told them that we had received this letter. And by the recommendation of city attorney, even I couldn't vote against the city on this one. I mean, then I told them the only other actions are the restrictor and possibly redoing that pond or something, but that's, that's something else and has nothing to do with this. Alderman Winger, go ahead.
I understand the legal opinion and, but also, are we able to offer a grant money if the residents want to do this themselves? And maybe we offer a five thousand dollar grant to get them started in it? Would there be any liability on that?
There wouldn't be. There wouldn't be liability, but there's no legal provision. Essentially, while it's going to benefit the public, in, in some regard, it really is benefiting a small group of the public. So the way the courts interpret that is that you would be using public money for a private purpose as opposed to a retention pond that's going to alleviate flooding in a, in a large area where the city would maintain that. That, that's designed for the benefit of the general public, the residents of the city of, of Wooddale. But in, under the scenario, you're suggesting the courts have opined already that that would be the use of public funds for a, a private purpose and that's prohibited by the municipal code, state statute.
Okay, thank you.
With respect to the, to the attorney-client privilege, if I could, because it is a, an attorney communication, it does have case sites and so forth, what I could do is, is sort of de-lawyer it, if you will, and make it so that it's relatively clear and I can submit that to the city manager and he can distribute that to the members of the public. So it'll have the, the legal analysis for it, but they wouldn't have to meander their way through all the Fifth District case and so forth.
Okay, they haven't asked me for it, I just told them about it. Like I said, I was out there with Mister Zainer. We walked the pond over there. And he happened to tell me a couple of things that our previous engineer didn't think was a problem. I know he's investigating and may come back to us with some other recommendation or some.
So I would just suggest that if you, you hold that, if anybody makes a request, have it, the requests be made to the city manager and then we will have a memo that identifies that specific issue for him.
Alderman Winger.
Mister Bond, are we able to give the plans or the engineering work that we've already done on their situation? Are we able to tender those over to, to the residents so, so then they can at least have something to work off of? If they were gonna pull together and look at what they were gonna do to alleviate their problems?
I think if they made a, if I may, if they made a request, generally, the engineering plans are, there's some question as to whether they're the property of the engineering company that does it. Certainly, they are property of the city. My suggestion would be to have them ask, you know, have them make a request as to what specifically they'd like to see. And I think we could work with the engineer and say, here, this is what, 'cause some of the plans, they won't have any idea how to make heads or tails out of them, but we could identify that particular area and certainly would, I think we'd be able to make those available to the, to the residents.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on that? So we don't need a motion on this?
No.
All right, next is item number five. Report and recommendation, vehicle replacement, number five oh one, from Curry Motors through state purchase program for thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars. So I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, report and recommendation, contract award to Peterson and Mattz for the purchase of density baffles for the north wastewater facility in the amount not to exceed nineteen thousand, eight hundred. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, report and recommendation, pay request number four, partial to CNA Cement in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-five cents for the Elmhurst Street reconstruction project. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have one question. That six hundred foot of sidewalk I heard was redone, is that correct, Mister Kramer?
Correct. All the sidewalk that did not meet specifications from the city was not accepted. It was removed and replaced.
Any other questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, report and recommendation, pay request number two, partial to Kings Point General Cement in the amount of a hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-eight cents for the two thousand and ten sidewalk program and miscellaneous paving. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question? I, I have one. Do we have a punch list on this or, 'cause I think we're close to the end here, right?
Correct. We're currently working on that punch list now. Most of the items have been corrected on there. We did identify a few more within the last couple of days before that project is officially finalized out and closed. You will have a punch list.
So before next week's council, we'll know if it's completed, then we can.
I don't know if we're almost, I, I know we're close, we're ninety-nine percent there. We just have a few items left. Once we're to the final payout, you'll have the punch list for that. So and, and I can include the most recent one too, prior to the council meeting, if, if that's the.
Because we're only leaving, we're only leaving thirty thousand, that's gonna be enough?
Right now, everything is done, so I don't believe we're gonna need any additional funds outside of that. But again, I will include that punch list. We do have one that we were working off of before. Like I said, we did add one or two items to that since then, but I can include that.
Okay. Any other questions? Alderman Lewitin?
A question of John Kramer. I don't know if this is the responsibility of the sidewalk people or if it's city responsibility. FYI, we did our best to preserve the trees. We, we made, we made the sidewalk S-curves. However, some of the trees are small or some of them have branches that protrude into the sidewalk or they have, older ones have low hangs where they have branches so that a person on a bicycle would, would be knocked in the face by the branches. Whose responsibility is it to walk the sidewalk and see that eight feet is clear?
It would kinda depend on whether it's a parkway tree or if it's a private tree. We've taken the attitude at Public Works that we're gonna maintain pretty much anything that's in that public right-of-way as they come down the sidewalk. We've already done some amount of pruning on Oak Avenue already. We'll continue with that if we need to do any more, along with Elmhurst where a sidewalk was added. We know that we need to go down there and make sure that we have a proper height clearance off the sidewalk for that as well. So for right now, it's Public Works because a majority of those trees are the city-owned trees. If the private resident wishes to trim his own private tree, he can do that as well, but since it does affect a, a public sidewalk, we'll, the, the Public Works Department will probably be involved in pruning those and we'll make regular checks of that area for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Wesley?
Mister Kramer, I commend you for taking the, the lead on, on these projects. But before Dave Graff used to give these reports and when we were told that our manager's gonna pick up the slack on it, so my question is, I guess, to the city manager, why, why are you giving these reports?
I'm out on the projects, so I feel comfortable giving the report. I've met with most of the contractors on a day-to-day basis, I'm involved in it.
Thank you for the extra work, but we were told different. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items to be considered at future meetings. A, Treatment Plan, Plan A two point five. B, Preliminary Engineering for Drainage and Road Construction, Forest View, Oakwood, Edgewood and Harvey. C, Citywide Drainage Solutions. D, Enforcement to Remove Some Pump Connection to Sanitary Sewer. E, Consideration of Tall Oaks Detention Basin Maintenance Agreement. F, Replacement of Silver Maple Trees in the Parkway. G, Resurfacing of Pine Tree Lane. Anything else needs to be added? Alderman Lewitin?
There's, there are people in the city on Edgewood that are concerned about putting in a sidewalk. And I'd like to put items to be considered for future meetings is putting a sidewalk on Edgewood. We should be getting a petition from a majority of the people on Edgewood in the next week or two. Would this be the proper place to put it?
I believe so, Public Works.
Thank you.
Anything else? Alderman Wesley?
Mister Chairman, I, I don't know how many times we have to say this. Over a month ago, we asked for pictures of the resurfacing on Pine Tree Lane of where that curve is. And it was supposed to bring to this committee. It's been over a month. I know there's pictures. Why aren't we getting it? I know it's been talked to with the city manager. He was there. And I'm not blaming Steve here or John. When are we gonna get them? Someone tell me? I've been waiting a month.
Somebody wanna take, you wanna take that, John? Go ahead.
I guess I'm a little hazy as to the subject matter, but Pine Tree Lane, there's a paving issue that needs to be looked at by Public Works?
You know, here's the deal. We have a two-year warranty on that, right? Two years? And it's, it was cracking a month after they put it in. That's why we got the two-year warranty. They should fix it. Bottom line. Go ahead. Alderman Wesley?
I, I asked for this, the pictures to bring to this council for their opinion if they think this is professionalism or to be replaced. So all I'm asking is for this council to look at these pictures and make a judgment decision if this needs to be repaired or not. But it doesn't, it seems very difficult to get those pictures.
Actually.
And believe, believe me, Mister Kramer, it's not, you weren't involved with this and it's not yours, your, your problem.
There's actually like three or four spots we got two-year warranty. This one is probably the worst. Should be redone already. Should've been redone last year personally. Go ahead, John.
Let me follow up with the project, find out who the contractor was, see if there were photographs taken of the, of, of the patching after the contractor was done and then I'll have a report at the next committee meeting by the twenty-eighth.
I, I know there was pictures taken them. I seen them. And again, it's not you, it's not Steve, it's not coming to this committee and it needs to be brought up right away. We shouldn't be waiting a month.
Anything else? Alderman Winger.
Just a general, general question. Was there commitment that it was gonna be brought up to the committee by, by city staff or?
City staff has told me that they were gonna bring the pictures.
That, that they took, and so.
It's brought, it's been brought up right in this committee before. City manager's been sitting right there when we talked about it and he said he was, that they were gonna come.
Well, then I'd like to ask the city manager, he's right here. What's the status of the pictures?
Wally?
I've never seen any pictures there. I am aware that the issue exists, that there's some concern about the, the, for lack of a better term, the flaking or the deterioration of the, of the pavement in that particular area. I have never seen any pictures. I've just asked Jeff if he's seen any and he has not either. I don't believe Mister Kramer has, so we will certainly go out there and take additional pictures and get them to you.
Okay. Okay.
Alderman Wesley?
Maybe you should check with Mister Dave Graff's computer or something because they're there and I seen them.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll call to order the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee meeting of October fourteenth, two thousand and ten. Will the minute taker please show same members present? Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting dated September sixteenth, two thousand and ten. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Non-motion carries. Uh, next item is a report and recommendation on a request for special use, case number one zero dash S U three. The Easy Stop Tire Repair Center, address three sixty-five East Irving Park Road. Ross, would you mind giving a very brief presentation on what the request is?
Certainly. What you have before you is a request to operate a special use for a tire repair service or tire repair center at three sixty-five East Irving Park Road. It would consist of an operating in a thirty-seven square, thirty-seven hundred square foot space in the building at three sixty-five East Irving Park Road. Also located at this address is a thirteen hundred square foot retail space that is not part of this application and currently operated as a jewelry, jewelry store. This matter did go before the Zoning Board of Appeals on September twentieth. At that time, the, at the public hearing, the concerns were that since this other retail establishment has the access on Irving Park Road, that all of the ingress and egress would be through the alley. Could be, and was felt that it could create a problematic and confusing situation for potential customers of both the Easy Tire Repair Center and the additional retail occupancy located at the address. There was also concern that since the access, only access was going to be through the alley, that this might create a, a problem for the residential neighborhood immediately adjacent to the property and that they could potentially be negatively impacted by the noise and nature of this business.
Okay, Mister Clicker, I'm gonna ask you to either read or give a synopsis of staff's recommendation.
Certainly. Staff's recommendation to the zoning board indicated that a similar use had operated at this location. It was the Eagle's Claw Motorcycle Shop. However, that use occupied the entire building and did not require the sharing of onsite parking with another retail user. Additionally, the parking, the petitioner had provided no information or indication as, indication that they were able to, be able to provide direct customer access to Irving Park Road. Instead, they will rely on the public alley for customer access. Staff believes that both of these issues would create a confusing situation for potential customers, both Easy Tire Repair Center and the additional retail occupancy and could potentially impact the surrounding properties in the negative matter. In light of these issues, staff did not support this application.
Hey, thank you, Mister Clicker. I have a special request from, from a resident. He wants to make comments. Because you made a special request, I will allow it and then I will also allow the petitioner, if they choose to make any comments, the, the same courtesy. Mister Petrovich, if you'd like to come up to the podium. But I will remind you that we please need to keep comments down under three to five minutes. So, thank you.
I live at, my name is Mirko Petrovich. I live at two fifty-four North Ash. I live right behind the property. As you know, there was a lot of issue with Eagle Claw. Right now, the way I see it, this particular business, according to the city court, belonged to the M one zoning, the tire repair. I don't even know how he ended up applying for the special use. Apparently, the only person that should apply is the one that qualifies in a B one to go in a B two. This particular business is in a limited, M one limited manufacturing district. And it says here, tire service station, battery and tire service station. I'm asking city council to reject underground. Is a residential, a lot of residential area around. There is a building on the left that have four apartments up, up, up on the left side. In the building with, with a jewelry store, there is one apartment. On top of the liquor store, there is four apartments and there is a residential in the back of it. I'm gonna ask city council not to allow and to deny special use permit for operational retire, balance and repair service in a B two business district at three sixty-five Irving Park Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Petrovich. With the petitioner, I'd like to make any comments, ask any questions. Please give us your name and address, please, also.
Okay, my name is Lisa Rivera. I'm at ten two seventeen Bolden Avenue in Merrose Park, Illinois. And my husband and I are the ones applying for the special use request. We, this is gonna be a business that is gonna be, everything is gonna be done inside of the building. None of the machines are big, everything is very simple. We're just gonna use jacks to fix the tires. We don't, we're not gonna have any noise. It's not gonna be similar to the motorcycles because as you know, motorcycles are very loud. This is, the cars, the cars are just gonna pull inside of the building, get the work done and leave. And also, I just wanted to note that there's a change of the original proposal. After speaking to the landlord, we have agreed, there's a front door garage in the front of the building and we can use that for access to the building as well. So we now can use the front and the back. That's it.
Thank you. Council members, comments, questions? Alderman Chocky?
I'm sorry, I, I thought that when the zoning Board of Appeals turned something down by unanimous vote, that it didn't come to council. Am I mistaken?
It would come to council for the council to overturn or go against that recommendation. It would require a supermajority.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Um, our city managers just walked out and he's supposed to be in, in these meetings. So I'm going to make a motion for recess.
City manager's here.
I don't need one.
Anything else on the subject? Okay, even, even in light of the, the change that, that you're, you've offered to make to the petition as presented, there are still enough factors, in my opinion, showing this is the, this is the wrong location for this use. It's my recommendation to agree with both the Zoning Board of Appeals as well as staff. However, for proper protocol, I will make the motion in the affirmative to, to approve the request for special use. I will ask for a second, but I will be voting no.
I'll second.
On the question, Alderman Lewitin?
When there's only, when there's only six people instead of eight, what is, what is the supermajority in that case?
I do believe the supermajority is always six. Mister Clicker, can you confirm that?
I believe that to be correct.
So it would be, everybody here would have to vote yes to overturn the ruling? Question, Alderman Wesley?
Your motion is?
My motion is to approve, just so that the motion is in the affirmative and then the record will show accurately that it, whether it was approved or denied.
Okay.
So I think we had the second, correct? All right, then I'm gonna say, Alderman Winger?
Just one more question. Regarding the tire changes and then, isn't there always a test drive after like a rebalance or a tire change? Is there any test drives?
No, not in this location.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Wesley?
You're saying there's no noise. How do you take these tires off? I think you would take them off with an impact wrench?
Uh, it's not gonna be any loud noise. It's, we're not gonna use any equipment that is gonna cause a lot of noise. The work is gonna be done of the, I mean, of course, there's gonna be noise, but it's, everything is gonna be done inside of the building, so you won't be able to, the noise is not gonna come all the way to the houses of the neighbors. We're not gonna disturb them in any way.
Alderman Lewitin?
Getting back to protocol. A supermajority is always a supermajority of the full council regardless of how many people are present. You've indicated that you are making this motion in the positive and you announced in the forefront of everybody's. in the forefront of everybody's eyes that you're gonna vote no. What are we, what, why are we even asking any questions?
So when this comes to council, it's a recommenda, it's a vote already taken at committee level, so this can go on the consent agenda, we don't have to talk about it again. Unless somebody chooses to pull it off the consent agenda, assuming it's either approved or denied unanimously. Either way, it's standard protocol, whether you need supermajority or majority, you have to vote. So I think that it's appropriate, I know that it's appropriate at this point to, to vote on this, like we do on everything else that is listed as report and recommendation at committee level.
I call for a vote now, no further discussion.
I completely agree with you, and I will just ask for all those in favor, please say aye. All right, all those that's in favor of approving? Okay, and all those opposed to approving? Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion fails. Okay, that concludes that item. The only other thing we have this evening are items for future meetings, develop more requests for revision to approve subdivision plans at Ethan Woods, lot coverage, letters of credit policies, pylon signs, welcome packets. Anything else? Alderman Wesley?
I'm gonna make clear again, because things seem to slip around here, the welcome packets, we are gonna see these before they get printed, correct? This council's gonna see these before they get printed? I have to ask these questions four or five times before I get...
Yes, as I had stated before, you will definitely see it, it's, it's on the list of items for future agendas. We had been working on it this week in the administration office, and the building department is also working on it with the Chamber of Commerce, so that's gonna be coming up quite quick now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wesley. Anything else anybody is asking to see? If not, then I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Well, I have a comment that I feel is necessary to make at this time, I made it to you this morning at the gas station when I happened to bump into you. Few months ago, we overwhelmingly voted to put a water drinking fountain in Wooddale in, in the park, and it was put up day before yesterday, and I commented to you that I had stopped by, walked over to it, turned it on, noticed that it's working functionally, and I think it's a very nice addition, and I think this is a time to give you, John, credit for bringing that forward and pushing the issue, and I, I am taking the time right now to say publicly, everybody, yes, if you're walking on Wooddale Road near Irving Park and you're thirsty, there is a water fountain, and John Cadala must...